Pledge of Allegiance to the flat, United States of America. To the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as for all.
I'm gonna give you your roll call, please.
Yes, I will. Councilmember Blush.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Good.
Mayor Nesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Sapp.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Congress, any changes to the agenda? Back to the city manager, do you have any changes?
No, no changes.
All right. The council have any board reports to share? All right. Are we ready for reading the agenda? Congress, please read the agenda.
Vouchers numbered 112220 through 112265, and EFT payment numbers 897 through 927, in the total amount of $273,869.25. Vouchers numbered 112285 through 112309, and EFT payment numbers 928 through 940, in the total amount of $284,077.86. Payroll warrants numbered 4021 through 4025, and 14060 through 14061. Warrants 112266 through 112284 in the amount of $653,708.95. Payroll warrants numbered 112315 through 112316 in the amount of $51,637.29. Parks Advisory Committee reappointments, Arts Commission reappointments, Resolution number 1361-1124, Safe Routes to School Construction Final Acceptance, and Minutes from the Business Meeting of December 3rd, 2024, and the Study Session of December 10th, 2024.
Thank you, Congress. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Okay, second, approve the consent agenda as read. All who care say aye.
Aye.
Now, I'll go back to public, make a comment, and I would say this is something should be made to the entire council, not individual council. Please refrain from making personal disrespectful remarks that create disruption, that we have reasonable disruption to conduct interviews with the asked, what we've done, and we've started a public comment.
We do. Our first is Erin Marktonak.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. I just want to update you all on what's happening at the shelter. It is below freezing at night and during the day, and so we have added a cold weather shelter. I don't think there's another one going on in the city. And so we have put out a sign and just asked our staff to divide their time between downstairs and upstairs. I think we have between five and 10 people over the last four nights that have taken advantage of that. And I know that a couple people have brought things for them to eat and, and so they can feel sustained and supported. We still have our dinner teams going on, and we're adding more dinner teams so that we have all but, I think, eight nights of the month covered, and so people can come in and get dinner between five and six. We have our case managers who are trying to stack the shelter during the day as they're doing case management with individuals. They're also allowing people to come in out of the cold during the day and feel supported and supervised. It's really important for us, for people, not to freeze outside, right? That can cause death and dismemberment, but also to feel safe when they're inside. And so that we want to spend our time making sure that everyone's safe and following the rules. I just wanted to keep you up to date and thank you for your support and answer any questions that you might have. I'm always available and willing to communicate, I think. Talking and communicating is really the most that we can do to support all of our citizens and make everyone feel more safe. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kathy Miguel.
Good evening, Council. I'm glad to see here, see you, and I'm glad to be here tonight. I am slowly moving into disability. I haven't given up yet, but I'm concerned about Robert Avenue and the amount of handicap spots. I don't think there are any on Railroad Avenue. We have some on the side streets. But when you have a hard time walking, especially at night, it's nice to have the handicap spots. So I'm encouraging you to, I know that it's, we've talked about it before, encouraging you to go forward with this and and get some handicap spots. Thanks.
And our next speaker is Ian Jewett.
Good evening. I want to talk about a couple of subjects. I'm gonna piggyback on Kathy, you know, real quick. Because Kathy's actually brought this to us multiple times, you know, and many, many months ago, about the condition of railroad and the sidewalks and the tripping hazards that are there. And they're still there. So, I mean, what kind of a liability does that put us under? So maybe we can maybe put some public works, put some attention on that. I want to talk about the rule of law and our ordinances and how we enforce the rule of law and whether it's discriminatory or not, and how we do some of our policing. I just want you guys to all have that in the back of your head. A lot of the laws and ordinances are not written to say, with the exception of a Wednesday, when it's dark at six, when it's raining, and there's a cloud out. There's no exemptions that are in those. The ordinances and the laws are written, and they're to be applied nondiscriminately. Okay? So I just want to make sure that we understand that. Another thing I want to chat about is I've been requesting probably six times and so have other members of our community about a town hall meeting. And it just seems to fall on deaf ears. We either don't want to do it, maybe we're intimidated by it, maybe we're afraid by it, maybe we don't want to have the, the public and the transparency going back and forth. You know, when we get up here and we have a conversation with you all, you don't respond to us. You know, very rarely do we get an email back. So having a town hall meeting is something that I feel is very important. So I'm throwing this under your guys' plate. If I don't hear that we're going to have one in the next week, then I am going to rent the civic center and we're going to hold a community-sponsored town hall meeting. And we're going to invite all the sheriffs, county commissioners, all of you all, the public, you know, the public works, all the department heads, police, everybody. It's not about one way or the other. It's about being able to come up here and have a conversation with you all and then get some feedback and some responses back. So I would hope that we can do it by you guys doing it, not having it to go to civilians. I talk about ADA and our ordinances. So we have a street sidewalk ordinance, 1.2 or 12.04 is where it starts. And you go all the way down to right away, 12.20. So you look up some of these ordinances and it talks about permits, who's going to be there, who's not going to be there, impeding the flow of pedestrian traffic, who has a permit to set up and serve food. The other day, I came by after a school board meeting and there was a entity down on Third or Fourth Street there that was completely blocking, and I had to travel into the oncoming lane to go around. This has been brought to Mark Ziegler's attention, so we'll kind of see where it goes from there. Thank you.
We don't have anyone on Zoom, Mr. Mayor, so that's it for now.
Our first presentation tonight is the Police Department Officer of the Year. Captain Hatt will be presenting.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, it is a, it's a privilege and an honor for me to be here tonight. What a very fun opportunity to present this award. Looking back at our plaques in the PD, I can see it going back to 2001, where every year we pick an officer of the year. The process for that is we send out an email to the officers asking for nominations. And they're required to send in a lengthy response, not just a name, but they have to make an argument to why they pick this particular officer as Officer of the Year. This year I got about nine responses. And it really made our job easy because the chief makes the final selection. And of those nine responses, eight were for the exact same person and mainly for the exact same reasons. And so it's really an honor for me to congratulate Detective Corporal Mike Gettle here with Officer of the Year. And here's a plaque for that award. Then I just want to share with you a couple of reasons why he got this. You know, probably a city council, when your department heads are doing an amazing job, it makes your job really easy. Same thing at the Police Department. Detective Gettle makes my job much easier. When I hear that he's on, I know things are handled. He handles all of our criminal investigations, so anything that's very serious in the city, Detective Gettle's involved in. He also reaches out to the families. It just doesn't stop where his investigation stops. There's been numerous cases where after the suspect's been arrested, he's been in contact with the victim, the family of the victim, all the way through the judicial process. And this goes in line with our core values, our mission statement, police department partnering with the community. He really brings them in. Lastly, two things I just wanted to really address is a lot of times I have to have a patrol officer and trying to take detective out of detectives to cover patrol is difficult. Not once has Detective Gettle ever complained or anything like that. In fact, a lot of times he'll text me back off the grid and say, hey, I'm more than happy to do this if no one else will. He doesn't want the recognition. He's telling me in private. And lastly, police work's a very dangerous job. We all have to fill out forms that we give to the department. So if something happens to us in line of duty, if tragically, if we were to pass away or die, this is how we want our family being notified. We've got this information. We're trying to update it yearly. And there's an important section that says, who do you want to contact your family? And of course, for me, you know, the chief needs to be there, but on mine, I, and Detective Gettle doesn't know this, but I asked for Detective Gettle to go along with the chief. And that's just the action that, he's just not careful because he was nominated. Like, here's a true belief of, this is the person I want that shows sympathy and empathy. And if someone had to deliver the worst news in the world to my family, this is the person I want doing it. This is a representative of someone that's serving your community for the Shell and Police Department. Thank you.
Congress, what, saying to Officer Gettle?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I've heard nothing but good things about you since the day you started. We go all the way back to Portier Albert McClary. Congratulations. Thank you. You have anything to say to us? Where are your?
No, I'd just like to thank my friends and family that came and thank the other officers in the department for voting for me. It's very humbling. You have a very good department of great officers that want the best for the community and they, and they try to do their best they can and they, they serve the citizens of Shell and very well. But that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. This is a financial report for the month of November. And we have a little bit of a benefit of knowing a little bit more than just November because we're preparing this in December. So some of the estimates, I would say, are pretty darn close. But we'll spend a little more time next month on December, which will show us where the year ended. That'll be important as we enter into budget preparation. I know we just started a fiscal year, but we'll be thinking about that pretty, pretty soon. I wanted to point out on page one of the November report, you'll notice we have an estimated fund balance of just over 6.7 million, and I want to remind the council that 20% of that amount is reserved for policy and the remainder is unreserved, but just over a million of that balanced the 2025 budget. So our ongoing revenue, as a reminder, did not meet our ongoing expenses, so we're using a good portion of that fund balance. And I was talking with Mark the other day about the fact that that 20% really is that money that the city uses during those times where our revenues fluctuate. So in particular, right now, where we're in between property tax collections, we, in the month of January, the accounts payable batch that I approved on Friday was over $1.4 million. It paid our liability insurance, which was a large chunk of that. But we rely on that cash balance so that we don't have to do short-term borrowing. So it really keeps us in an ability to make sure that our expenses can flow evenly. So, you know, sometimes we look at that, well, do we really need 20%? It's also there for the case of an emergency, as you know, where you could authorize that if we had some sort of natural disaster or an economic downturn that was severe enough that we needed it. But that's, I think it comes to my mind very sharply when we have an accounts payable run like we did last week and then, you know, coupled with payroll that'll happen this week. So we use that that reserve greatly. So the November financial report puts us at 92% of the year. If revenue and expenditures were all equal, they aren't. As I just mentioned, revenue isn't. Some things are. Some of our expenses are payroll tends to be pretty evenly divided so that we can measure it. So our fiscal year ends on December 31st, but we keep the fiscal year open for 20 days after that so that we can accurately record 2024 expenses. So things that come in though, so we closed it Friday. That was our last run of 2024. Anything that truly is a 2024 expense, we're posting back in there. So some of our consultant bills that come in, we're posting those back. Our utility bills that are clearly December, we're posting into December. So our estimate for the general fund will change. This is our, look at it when we were preparing this over a month ago. So, and I can tell you, a lot of expenses came in, so that balance will fluctuate. And as I mentioned, we'll look at it in a little bit more detail on next month's report where we can really look at the year in its totality. On page two of the report, the general fund revenue, this should be close to what it turns out again because we were estimating, for instance, property taxes. Those were mostly in, and so we know a lot about that. One thing I wanted to mention about property tax, it's down five and a half percent from our budget. That's a little bit more than I'd like to see. So that's, you know, those taxes are levied against properties, so if for some reason they're not paid, but properties sell, they will be, as you know. But being down five and a half percent is a little bit more than we normally are. It's usually around the 3% mark. So I'm I'm not making any comment on why or what, but it's just a little bit notable that that happened. Overall, though, our revenue exceeds budget by a fairly decent amount, a million dollars in the general fund. Some of that is because I estimate conservatively, and I've told you that I tend to err on that side. I would rather come to you and say we got more sales tax than we're under by a large amount. We did get more sales tax, 3.4% over budget. The other area that was over is business and occupation tax. And I started the year, last year, estimating that we might be under. That caught up pretty well to the tune of being over budget by 7.2%. So that's good also. A lot of our annual filers for 2024 will be paying this month, so we increase the budget in 2025, as a reminder. I wanted to take you through some of these other lines where they're a little bit over under licenses and permits. It's hard when you look at that to know what the heck is that that's contained within those lines. So under licenses and permits, it's over largely because building permits exceeded budget by about $100,000. So we collected more than $100,000 in building permits because I budget a certain amount. We were over budget by $100,000. Charges for services includes plan review fees in engineering that were over budget and plan review fees for community development that were over budget, so that between the two of those, that accounts for most of the overage there.
A lot of that's going out, correct, with ground sorging, a lot of our, or?
On the expense side, yes. But the revenue, correct, it's not.
We're paying 70% of inspections and plan fees to other agencies, correct?
To our contractor, right? Jay, do you want to answer that with a little more detail?
Jumped in real quick. Ever since we hired our new building inspector and he's got his certifications, we've been keeping the vast majority of our projects announced now. Only our larger commercial projects are going out, but a lot of the single band revenue, we've been able to keep coming. So we had a couple of big bills from last year, but those should be pretty much done by the end.
And then under miscellaneous revenue, you'll notice it's over a fairly significant amount, I would say, by 348%. It's a small budget line, so when it goes over, that's pretty significant. The increases there are largely in investment interest. As I mentioned before, the way that the interest rate was set by the Federal Reserve very much favored public funds investment. So we have exceeded. I don't know if it'll continue, but we'll take it while we can get it. We also have the opioid money that came into that area of the budget and we, the city received revenue from a property that was sold that had been abated, so we attach expenses to that at that time. And then when the property sells, we receive that money back. And so that's why that particular line was so over budget. Again, we budget pretty conservatively on what normally we would receive on investment interest, and then when it comes over, that happens. We also had quite a bit in donations and contributions that in particular the Police Department received, and those were also recorded in that miscellaneous line. So all those factors kind of came together to make our revenue exceed budget by what I would call a pretty decent amount for what we normally see. So certainly, that's not something we can always count on, but in 2024, it made our, our revenue look really darn good. On page three is a breakdown of the expense categories for the general fund. It's where we're estimating things are for November. Again, we'll look at this a little bit more next month. You'll notice expenses are running, or we're estimating in November that they're pretty close to budget. So we're not estimating much savings on the expense side. So if we translate that to this year, 2025, and remember I said we're using over a million dollars of our ending fund balance, then I would deduce that we're probably going to use that out of 2025 also. So that's where we're talking about meeting with you this spring to talk about priorities and service levels so that we can really, as departments and directors start to drill into preparing the 2026 budget, knowing what we need to do. And then let me just end here by going up to page seven of the report. And this shows the fund balances that we're estimating in November. Of course, that's changed significantly with some of the things that happened with regard to the supplemental budget that you adopted in December. So we don't bring that into this. We know it happened as we're preparing this, or we presume it's going to happen as we're preparing this. Once it happened, that changes some things because it takes away some of the obligations in our funds. It moves some of the revenue in where we realize some grant money and offset some expenses. But as we're looking at right here, all of our fund balances are positive, and we'll go over that in a little bit more detail next month when we look at December. The citywide FTE and vacancies did not change from the month of October, so those remained citywide at a vacancy rate of 6.5 FTE. 3.5 of those are in the general fund. And with that, and then pages eight through the end of the financial report is a citywide fund overview of revenue and expenditures by each fund to detail that. And we'll, we, as I mentioned, we've we haven't closed 2024, but we won't process any more accounts payable, so we'll be able to prepare the financial statement with pretty firm revenues, firm expenses, so that we can look at it next month and really have a pretty good idea of where we ended up, where that ending fund is, and where all the funds lie at the end of the fiscal year. And that's the end of my report. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I have a question. So Mr. Givens, we increased our insurance payout more than double, right?
In about three years, it's more than double, yes.
So the actuaries are saying there is a greater risk of things to happen in the city. How much of that is actually that percentage going up, that there's more risk, and how much of it is price gouging? And, or you could, can you tell me if it's a little bit more one or the other? Well, and if, and if something does happen, are they going to pay out? Because I'm really, keeps me up at night thinking about what happened in Los Angeles and things are, there's a huge five or something and these insurance, or our insurance will pay out, you know, so.
Sure. I, I don't, I don't know that I can answer about price gouging. I think it's just the cost of insurance. We're in a pooled, you know, with common, with other cities. So we're in a pooled insurance plan. I think as far as what we have, we're well covered. I, if we had suffered, if we suffer a loss to one of our buildings, we have a replacement coverage, the same with our vehicles. But some of our other kinds of liability have just gone up and we look at that pretty closely when we're costing it out to departments. We have some, I would say, pretty complex and clear formulas so we can look at where has the risk happened? Where have we had some lawsuits that we have had to settle? Where have we had accidents with our vehicles? Where have those occurred? You know, fortunately, we haven't had any losses to buildings, but that insurance has gone up because the cost to replace a building is so much higher than it was, say, even five years ago. So I would reassure you that we're well covered and that because of the pooled nature of our insurance plan, I feel confident that should we experience a loss, it will be covered. You know, of course, we'd have to pay the deductible that's due at certain levels, but we've had some payments this last year on vehicles that were in accidents where they were fully covered after we paid the deductible. So I, I don't stay up at night, so I would reassure you to rest easy that our insurance is well covered. I wish it was less money, as you do, because having, you know, when I first started, it was about half a million dollars. So to have that price tag be pushing 1.2 million in less than three years, that's staggering. But pretty much any city across Washington is facing this. You know, it's particularly expensive with regard to law enforcement. We have more exposure there. So all of those things come together to create that increase.
And our insurance is through the, all Washington cities, just like most of the other municipalities, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So we're in the same boat as almost every other city in the state, correct? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we shopped actually cheaper insurance than whether they cheaper.
It wasn't, no. Yeah.
Quite a bit more, actually.
Okay, that lets, that helps me out a lot. Thanks.
All right. Moving on to our business agenda, our only business item is the pointiest of parking advisory, George Templeton. All right, moving on to our business agenda, our only business item is acquaintance of park advisory, George Templeton.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, we are looking to appoint two members to the parks and rec advisory committee. Um, just so you guys all know what that group does, um, they're responsible of advising you guys on future parks and. Rec resources, making recommendations on part of rules and regs. Um, serving as a liaison to the community and assisting in the comp plan process when that time comes around. Um, we did some advertising through our city social media, and we got two members actually a lot quicker than. I've ever experienced for a group, which is great. Um, Diane Zorin and Ted Killen are both city residents and are looking to join us. Um, Diane will be filling a full term, which is three years, and Ted would be filling a partial term. Um, be happy to answer any questions.
We have a motion.
I move to approve the reappointment. Oh, the Shelton Parks Vice Recruiter is part of the agenda, oh, sorry, wrong one. I'm going to approve the appointment uh for the Parks Advisory Committee for the February fourth twenty twenty five agenda for further consideration.
Second. Right, the motion is second to forward a performance of park advisory committee to the board for twenty twenty five. Right. Our first action item, first agreement with W S U extension, Jordan has more.
Yes, just bringing this back to you from a couple of weeks ago, it's our updating our M O A with catalyst. For Catalyst Park with W S U extension, um, it's mainly for, you know, defining the operations for what they do and what the city upholds and. Um, no major changes since last time, so happy to answer any questions.
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a read version one three five seven dash one one two four.
Resolution number one three five seven dash one one two four. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, accepting the memorandum of agreement with W S U extension. For the operations of the Catalyst Park demonstration garden.
Thank you, John, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number one three five seven dash one one two four as presented.
Right, how much a question?
Decided to. Check out what the master gardeners have in plan, and they do provide food for the local food bank, so their work is not just. Cool and and educational, but also very practical, so.
Yes.
Um, thank you so much for getting this forward and yeah, bringing this to us.
Thank you.
Okay, motion is second to approve resolution number one three five seven dash one one two four. All right, next other, a resolution on on call, call to pool agreements. Assistant Public Works Director, Aaron Nix has details.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilor, thank you for the opportunity to be here. As I uh mentioned at your last meeting, I brought this forward over the holidays um as a a normal process procurement. Typically, um what we'll do is every two to three years, we will do uh an R Q for engineering type related services. This past year, we did the same process, it's been two or three years since we did this. Uh, with the intent that we want to have qualified firms as we're going through the course of our business. Sometimes there, let's say we need a water engineer or somebody to help provide us some support on project. Um, we utilized this uh. The this list with regard to consulting firms. Um, as I mentioned at the last meeting, there is a uh, it's a table in your um. This table here. It identifies fifteen different subject areas, and what we get a little bit different with this one is. We wanted to identify consulting firms that um would help out the works of the entirety of the city, so that's why you see a lot more. Uh, items in here with regard to expertise, oftentimes certifications that are required of of these folks. In all cases, we identified at least two firms. Uh, again, this is not committing us to anything, all we're doing is entering into a contract that. When you guys approve the budget and want me to go do design work, we can utilize that list. Now, with the understanding that that. That approval only goes up to signing authorities, so I think Mark was like at thirty. Even if it is approved in the budget, it's coming back to you for approval, so. There's some double checks in in this with regard to uh what we'd like to do. Again, our desire is to move, enter into on-call contracts with these firms, some of the uh the uh. Categories have two, some have three, and the reason we did that is in the ones that identified two firms. We didn't have as much of a need for that, uh whereas the other ones with three, we wanted to make sure that we had at least three representatives. Of firms that could do work for us in the future, so. What I'm looking for is the approval of this resolution so that we can enter into these contracts with these folks and continue on with our work. Are there any questions?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe we the version number one three seven three dot one one two four.
Resolution number one three six three dash one one two four. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, authorizing. The award of contracts for on-call architecture and engineering consulting services. And authorizing the city manager to execute said contracts.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt resolution number one three six three dash one one two four as presented.
Second.
Sure, I've got one, I I don't. I don't want to put you on the spot.
That's okay.
Uh, I can follow up in email, but I know last week you said we aren't allowed to rank. Uh, engineering type contract requests based on cost, so we put out the R Q, it's just based on qualifications. And once we approve it, they're going to send us the cost.
That's correct.
Essentially, are we required to reach out to them based on their qualification ranking moving forward? Or are we allowed to rank them based on cost now?
That's a very good question. I I don't want to put myself in a legal jeopardy here, um and I don't think I am. I think um. With regard to, they've done the competition with regard to each individual firm, we've identified the top three that would work for us. I would say that ultimately, when we go out and we get work orders from these folks, they will then give us cost estimates for that. Yes, I I would say that if indeed another firm we think might do a better job, might be a little bit cheaper, I think we have that ability to do that. It's just when you're doing the whole R Q process, it's purely based on because of the liability is not understanding with all degrees. Um, they have to be certified in these areas, and if they're not, that's what it costs a problem, so that's that's um. I think we do have a little bit of flexibility, but that initial R Q, yeah, it's all based on twelve. And that's how we have to judge it, so. Long way, if I answered your question is, yes, I think we do, if indeed we know that maybe one firm is going to charge more than another, or it's going to do better for us. But it's within those three that we've identified.
Right. Do we ask all three what their prices are and then pick that one, or?
No, we, after you guys prove this, we will then go enter into a quasi-negotiation, basically, they will give us their numbers. Uh, we'll have a discussion about it, and then that's set from the get-go, meaning they can't increase it. Or decrease it or whatever in the future, it has to stay that, and that's really helped us in the past. Especially when you get in the second, third year, they're all like, I want that five percent every year, every year, every year, and no, you're up your health to the contract.
Any questions?
Good questions, thank you.
I I'd rather have someone who's highly qualified do the works, we don't got to spend money on fixing something that's. Um, wasn't well done because they didn't have the qualifications, so um I think this is a good way to start. Thank you, thank you.
Your motion is second to adopt resolution number one three six three. One more re- resolution, this one is establish creative district.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council, uh as I presented uh two weeks ago, um this resolution is uh. Council espousing uh support for the creative district application and for the boundaries that we proposed. Essentially, the boundaries are what you would kind of define as downtown Shelton, um and uh this will be part of um the area that gets. Uh, special wayfinding treatments and things like that moving forward, um. Uh, hopefully, when we get our creative district certified status and we start doing the work under the grants that we'll get from ArtSwan. Um, regardless of whether or not we actually get certification, because it is a competitive process and there's a lot of communities that are seeking this. Um, this still uh shows our support for the creative economy and for. The the planning efforts that the community has been doing, so um, I'm happy to answer any questions.
John, you have a couple of comments?
No, Mr. Mayor.
They have a read version number one three six seven dash one two.
Resolution number one three six seven dash one two two four. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, establishing the creative, the Shelton creative district.
Thank you, John, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve resolution number one three six seven dash one two two four as presented.
All right, how much a question?
I think this is a great opportunity for us to bring in, to make us unique in not and not just any other city, but to have this creative arts districts. Um, makes us a a location where people want to come and get out of their car, walk around and spend some money and. Um, make sure our our economy is uh thriving, so this is such a wonderful opportunity for us to be unique and to have that. Sense of charm that people moved out here to Shelton to have, so thanks so much for ge- getting this and. Um, this project is uh so incredibly um inspiring for people. Uh, beyond just the economics, but also the beautification and the amount of art that we're. Watching to produce and create and the connectivity that it's going to create for all our citizens, so thank you so much.
Yeah, I am, so I understand you're saying that's a competitive market, but this is our town. And we don't need the state of Washington or anybody else to say, yes, you can have a creative district. We want to call it our creative district, let's call it our creative district, or they give us grants or whatever, it's ours. So, uh, that's wonderful if they do, but let's make it our own regardless.
Right, we have a question.
Right, we have a motion to second to approve version number one three six seven dash one two two four. I now have more than to repeal Shelton Department of Business regarding for hire vehicles. More information for us.
Yes, as a reminder to council, nothing's changed since the first presentation, but in the past, for hire. Um, vehicle companies within the city, operating within the city limits, made an application to us in finance. Um, paid some fees, police did some background check, fingerprints. It seemed like a duplicative process from what happened, so we're asking that this be. Uh, that the municipal code be repealed through this action.
John, you have some public comment?
No, there is none.
Can you read the version number two zero three dash one two three four?
Ordinance number two zero two eight dash one two two four. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, repealing chapter five point three two of the Shelton Municipal Code. Relating to licensing of for hire vehicles.
Thank you, John. Good motion.
Mr. Mayor, move to adopt ordinance number two zero two eight dash one two two four as presented.
Right, how much questions?
Good motion and a second to adopt ordinance number two zero two eight dash one two four presented, all of you say hi.
Hi.
All right, we now have one more item, um.
Yes, this is a result of your study session and discussion last week. Um, the city clerk gave you an updated list at your uh place and. No changes have been made since your discussion at study session with these updates.
Right, John, you have a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the amended twenty twenty five council board of committee assignments as presented.
You have a motion to second to approve the amended twenty twenty five council board of committee assignments. All right.
Mike, you got a statement or a question?
I just have a couple of items as I'm filling in for Mark for you, um I. Public Works is prepared, should, as you know, we've been having some cold nights, sometimes when we come out of that. Different weather events can happen there on um. The ball with that will be prepared should anything need to happen, hopefully it won't, we'll just go straight into rain or something warm. But they're prepared for that. I also, on another note, want to remind council and um the public that we'll be having. Uh, forum on downtown sidewalk repairs. It'll be held on Wednesday, the fifth of February, from six to seven P M at Civic Center. This will be to talk about the work that will be done on Railroad Avenue to repair the sidewalks. In relation to the downtown street trees and how they've raised up and created some tripping hazard. Um, I know Public Works is reaching out to um the Chamber and other businesses to make sure. Everybody knows about this and can participate in it. February fifth, six to seven P M. Excuse me, and that's everything, everything's going smoothly. On this first day back, without the regular city manager, thank you.
People.
Can we have a new item discussion? I don't believe that Aaron mentioned that, they that they are looking for donations that you have lists on their Facebook, they need to. Stuff like, like the noodles, like the blankets, snacks of water and stuff like that. Interested in some of that stuff, they also are looking for volunteers to help um inside the building for some night shifts. Maybe even nation somewhere, whatever you're saying, so if the person is doing that as well, I'm sure that was lucky to have. Right? Yes.
It's for anybody tuning in recently, yeah.
Shelton love that. Oh, all right, so you have a session. Our next meeting is February fourth, twenty, at six P M, and we are going to discuss. Um, outside of recent agenda, we are going to have a resolution on Washington State City Striking Contract. The resolution accepting new on piece agreement, resolution uh agreement for. Head safety, and I'm looking at what you know, the improvement design services. And then resolution to mid walk crossing, W K H, um design approval and uh that is all that's on there. And we have a study session on the February eleventh, it's called Gas Station Harrowlands. Very informative presentation about stuff that you can buy at a gas station today that gets you high. Addicted, maybe kill you, the O D on some of this stuff, and it's being sold, it's not regulated by the drug administration because um. It's considered a supplement, they even have mushroom powders, strawberry flavored C O two containers that you buy for your B B gun. And why you use strawberry flavors, because they're huffy and they're getting high and stuff like that, it's very informative, I've seen it more than once. Um, it'd be presented by a uh, what was this title, uh fifty security at Brent High School, he actually from Shelton. He actually worked at Shelton High School, and it's just very informative, parents should know what their kids come by. In a gas station today that is not good stuff, it is pretty scary presentation will will give you. So, um, there uh one of these creative, everybody knows creative, it's all over every building, and that's one of them, but there's many more. Um, and actually, creative is being heard in Olympia, at least for one. Why, you know, they'll talk or something about regulating, maybe very large in the state. So, it's very informative on February eleventh, and I would pass it on to all the parents in the in the area, this is going to be really. All right, so um, that would be it, I'll just begin the journey at six forty eight P M.